You can hear me all right? All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. This is a meeting about public safety in this park, in Glasgow Park. We appreciate so many people coming out tonight on a pretty warm night. We're just a few introductory comments. I'm gonna speak. We're gonna have our Chief of Police Colonel Joe Block speak. We're gonna invite elected officials who are here to come up and say a few words. And then we're gonna open the floor for anyone that has comments. We know there are a lot of issues across this county. We know there are a lot of issues in a lot of parks. And we know that there are issues people have with this park. Just in the interest of time and in the interest of moving forward, we ask that tonight, comments in particular, questions be focused solely on public safety in this park. Obviously, the recent events are extremely concerning. Two of our biggest responsibilities in government is, number one, providing a fantastic outdoor park system, free in Newcastle County, literally thousands of acres of free public spaces. And it's also really important that there be safety and public safety. It's of the utmost importance that people feel safe in every single park. Colonel Block's gonna come up with some statistics that maybe make the situation look not so bad, not as bad as you may be hearing. But the way I see it, any single incident is one incident too many. It's obviously awful for anyone who's victimized, but it's also bad for our entire community. When you come to our parks during the day when they're open, you need to know that it is a safe place for you and a safe place for your family. And we're coming to you not just to present to you what we're doing, but to listen to you, to hear your ideas and your thoughts on what we can do to make this great park safer. There are several things we have already done. Several of them Colonel Block is gonna talk about, some of the police actions that we've taken over the past few weeks to keep this park in particular safe. Starting several years ago, the Senior Leadership of the Police, I think Colonel Block is gonna reference this, presented me with a proposal for a park cadet program in our parks, a park cadet program. I approved it, County Council approved it. We were scheduled to start the program this past spring. We had budget for it. We opened up recruitment for it. And as is the case in public safety agencies across our country, we had challenges recruiting for our cadet program. So that recruitment process is still open. So I'm telling you that not only so that you hear that and have comfort that we're doing what we can to keep this place safe, but also if you know of anyone interested in signing up to be a cadet, it's a great way, I hope the chief doesn't mind me saying this, kind of dipping your toe in the water a little bit of in policing, to police our parks. And then that, I think it's fair to say, gives you a leg up or creates an easier pathway to potentially become and apply to our academy or another academy and be a police officer. I want to recognize the elected officials and the members of my staff who are in attendance here today. Councilman Dave Tackett, who you will hear from shortly after the chief, Councilman Brandon Tool, Councilwoman Valerie George. We have Representative Eric Morrison here. I saw Representative and former Newcastle County Police Officer Frank Cook here. Are there any other elected officials? Oh, Senator Brian Townsend is here. Oh, all the way back, how you doing, Brian? Good to see you. Thank you all for being here tonight. On my staff, we have the Director of Public Safety and Former Chief of Police Von Bond here. Kenny Dunn, who's worked very hard on constituent relations on my staff, along with Rashad Taylor are both here. And of course, Colonel Joe Block, the Chief of Police. Before he comes up, let me mention a couple other things that we've been working on, either already done or are working on doing. There are cameras, license plate readers in various places in various parks. We are constantly monitoring and looking at opportunities to add cameras in particular. It's not as easy as it looks. This is a big park. Many of the major, several of the major events that have occurred here recently have occurred in different places in the parks. So you have to be really thoughtful about where you put them, who's gonna monitor them, how do you make sure they're connected to steady electricity and things of that sort. It's a relatively major undertaking, but we are looking at doing it and continuing to consider doing it. We recently started a pilot, thanks to Kenny Dunn and Kendall Summers, also here from our Department of Public Works, where we installed gates. We installed gates in Biden Park, right outside Elsmere. We started the pilot, what Kenny, I think, two, three weeks ago. It's been a success. The gates close at night and they open to allow people to leave. But it's obviously much easier to monitor people going in and out, monitor people who in cases are breaking the law. And we've taken substantial steps to install gates here at Glasgow Parks. Among other things, I'm interested in hearing what people have to say. I imagine there are people that would want gates and some people that may not want gates here. Kenny, anything else about gates? Kendall? Okay, great. So without further ado, let me turn it over to our Chief of Police Colonel Joe Block.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you all for coming out. I can tell you that when I go to a community meeting, and I know a few of you have seen a community meetings, I usually start off when it's a crowded venue like this saying, "Thank you for all coming because I know that you have an interest in your community and you're there." Things are a little different right now because this is a meeting about concerns of public safety in this park. And the fact that all of you came tonight is a concern for me. Okay, I have two concerns with this. One is on a personal level. I run in this park. I end on that hill right there. My son plays basketball in this park at least twice, if not three times a week. During all last I've asked him, you know, because I'm not with him, he's 19 years old, "What do you see in the park?" And he says, "Dad, just hoopin'." He doesn't see anything in the park. As far as he's concerned, the park is safe. I know I've always felt safe in this park, but the fact that all of you are here today concerns me because obviously you're either here because you feel unsafe in the park or if you're not feeling unsafe in the park and you're just here, and I know I spoke to somebody on the way in, he wanted to know what's going on in the park because I feel safe. I want to know why we're here today. So again, I'm really here to listen. I will talk to you a little bit about how we police our parks here in Newcastle County. I can tell you that 10 years ago, if not 15 years ago, as a recruiting program, I was looking at, is there a way we could do a cadet program? Could we get officers or kids 18 to 21 that want to be police officers? Could we get them into our parks at a younger age, on bikes? Not really arrest powers, but get them to ride around because people see them and they feel safe. It was turned down many years ago. I can tell you about a year and a half ago, I went to my bosses and said, "Look, this was a program I wanted to start. There's a lot of reasons why it's difficult to do, but I want to do it." So I thought it was a good start to get more of a presence in the park. As the County Executive said, with his support and with County Council's support, I was able to get that program approved. Unfortunately, this spring, we had 17 applicants. Only two of those applicants were qualified, one we couldn't even look at based on background. And it left us with one person who we've now recruited to do an internship with us. So again, that's not off the table, but it is an idea. I just want to give you a sense that it's something that's on my radar. Last year, about this time, I was having issues over at Brandywine Springs Park over on the west side. And we put resources in that park. And I can tell you that there isn't a County Council person or a legislator that's here today or anywhere that hasn't had a complaint about one of their parks. This park, as big as it is, it attracts a lot of people, whether it be, you know, a Thursday night or a Saturday afternoon. I mean, you drive by here on a Saturday and there's hundreds and hundreds, if not a thousand, people here. So do you think, I think the park is safe? Absolutely, I feel the park is safe. I feel that there are some incidents that took a lot of headlines and they're serious incidents and they're calls for being concerned. I can tell you that I don't think that they're related, the major incidents. I won't get into the specifics of them, but I can tell you that they're serious incidents. But I don't think that they are because of this park is why they happened. I think they happened for various reasons, depending on what they were. I can tell you that we do have two active investigations right now. That is on the shooting that occurred earlier in June. And the second one is the incident that happened last Wednesday. Both of those are active investigations with our Criminal Investigation Unit. Both of these have very promising leads. We are making headway on both incidents. And I had hoped to be able to have some good news for you tonight. I don't, but I am still confident that we will have a positive outcome, not a positive outcome on the case, but a resolution on the case and justice in the case, if that's what you're here for. But again, one of the first things, other than the park's program, the other thing we do every spring is we have our mounted patrol unit. And I'm sure you've seen them here in this park. Unfortunately, there's only a few of them and we have to rotate parks. So our mounted patrol unit in the summertime, if they're not doing a special event, which they are tasked with doing a lot of special events on the weekends, there are other days that they are working, they're at a park. We rotate them through our bigger parks, but sometimes we take them to places like Brandywine Springs because some of those smaller parks get neglected because of the bigger parks demand more service. So the mounted patrol unit is one thing we use. We also encourage our police officers that when they're not on a complaint, which is seldom, but if they're on a complaint and they're doing paper, that when they need to go somewhere, to go somewhere where they feel safe and type the report there. And that's why sometimes you'll see them sitting in the park. My dad always used to tell me, "Joe, why are your guys always down the street in the church parking lot sleeping?" I'm like, "Dad, they're not sleeping, they're doing paperwork and they're going into an area where they feel safe." Right now, there's a lot of officers being ambushed across the United States. They're being ambushed when they're sitting in their car in a park in New York City, wherever, and they get ambushed. So we put training out on that, but that's why you'll see them. They'll tend to be in the middle of nowhere. It's not because they don't want to be with people, it's because they want to be able to see their surroundings. So we do encourage that at the patrol level. We also have a mobile enforcement team. The mobile enforcement team goes out to our hotspots. Depending on where they are, we move them around. That's why we call them the mobile enforcement team. We also ask them that in your downtime or in between going from one thing to another, that you spend time in the parks. Sometimes they're undercover, so they might be in here and you don't know that they're here, but they are out here in the parks. So that was before these incidents started happening. I've been working with Councilman Tackett since this year, since probably like April, on Wies Park, another park, a smaller park, a community park. But he gets lots of calls for, he gets lots of calls for people in the community that are not happy about what goes on in that park. So we were voting a lot of resources to that park. Back then, in the early, or late spring, I started doing pay jobs. So because the resources on the regular patrol may not be there to just say, "Go hang out in the park all night," we started doing pay jobs. One on the east side, one on the west side. And essentially, at least three days a week, we would send an officer to the east side, meaning this side of 95, the west side, meaning the other side of 95. And they would be in the park for four hours or six hours at a time. So that was what we were doing prior to this. When some of these things came to light, I got concerned. We have a crime analyst. I said, "Can you do me a favor? Can you pull me the numbers on the park? Because I want to know what they are." The community's concerned. I want to know what problems are facing us in the park. So he was able to do something that I shared with County Council on Tuesday, but he was able to show me every park in Newcastle County. It's, I think, 253 or 254 parks. I was able to take them, put them on a chart, graph out how many complaints there were, go back three years. Something that took him a lot of time to do. He wasn't happy with me, but it gave me a good glimmer as to what happened over the years. And what you saw is you had, and what's typical, right? In the spring, things come up a little bit. In summer, they go up a little bit more, then they die down and level off in the winter. So I was able to do that for all the parks. I went back and immediately I saw a spike in the last four months. I said, "That's concerning, right? There's a spike in the number of complaints in all parks." Then he informed me that on the right-hand side of this thing, I could look at self-initiated activity and I could look at officers called to the park for a complaint. And when I did that and I separated the two, I was thrilled to death to find out that our officer-initiated activity in our parks far exceeds the complaints in our parks overall. I can also go to each individual park and parse out how many complaints in each park and give me a good idea of what's going on in each park. Being we're here to talk about this park, I can tell you what I found out. And this was, I think, until, I think it was July 7th is where it stopped. So year-to-date, up to July 7th, in this park alone, 169 complaints. Out of that 169 complaints, 114 of them were self-initiated activity. That means an officer put themselves out here for a property check, were doing proactive patrols, stopped somebody parked at night when the park was closed. 114 of those complaints. I had 55 complaints in this park since the beginning of the year, January 1st of 2023. Okay, that was good. That made me feel a little bit better. But then I went in and said, "What kind of complaints are we handed to? Do we have a chronic issue? Is it drug dealing? Is it parties? Is it drinking? What is, why are we getting called to this park?" I have them on my phone, I can't really read them right now, but I spoke about them and shared a PowerPoint with County Council. I was thrilled to find out a lot of these complaints were somebody locked in a vehicle. There was a couple domestics, there was abandoned vehicles, there was one drug dealing complaint. I don't remember seeing any fights. Of course, the shooting was in there, the assault was in there. There isn't more assaults. It was assault that, you know, that went kind of viral. There was the shooting that obviously was out there. Where's the bomb threat? I spoke to County Council, they're, "The bomb threat doesn't mean somebody was here threatening with a bomb and there's a bomb in the park. It means that somebody that was in custody in another state, who was making all kinds of statements that we knew weren't true, had mentioned that he put something in a garbage can here in the park." They didn't really lend too much credibility to it, but they reached out to us. When we dig into it a little bit, we find out that somebody was with that person in the park and they did have a little bag with them in the park. He didn't think anything of it, but because of that, we decided, rather than err on the side of caution, we would shut the park down. Five days later, after the trash was picked up, and we would search this park. So we had all kinds of people out here to search the park because we wanted to ensure that this park was safe. We didn't find anything in the park. So again, yes, it's a bomb threat at the park, does bring, you know, attention. Was it because it's Glasgow Park? Was it, did he decide to come here because it's a bad park? It's an older gentleman that has some mental issues and it was just because it's Glasgow Park. Same thing with the shooting in the park. It was a party that occurred in the city of Newark where they rented a hotel. High school kids, they got kicked out of the hotel. Where are we gonna go? It's 1:00 in the morning. Let's find somewhere where nobody is. Let's go to Glasgow Park. If we had gates, would it have stopped it? Yeah, maybe they wouldn't have come here if we had gates. There's 253 parks. And I can tell you right now, if we put gates in this park, every representative up here is gonna want gates in their park. And I'm sure that we can work on that, but it's not something that could be done immediately. So we are taking these things seriously. Two other things, I saw two indecent exposures here at the park. That concerned me because in our parks, in our communities, we've had different things like that. One of those was a high school couple that were parked in a parking lot close to here at 6:00 in the afternoon, and somebody called that in. And the second one was school-age kids, elementary school kids, that were playing a sport and the coach was letting them pee in the bushes and somebody walked by and reported it. So we dealt with that, we dealt with that coach. I don't think there was any ill intent. But those are the concerning things I saw. I know that they're out there. You know, this isn't a park where we have a chronic problem where we can say, "We're gonna stop this." It's just a place with a lot of people, no different than the Christian mall or anywhere else. So what have we done since then? How many have seen an increased police presence since then? Okay, a few of you have. Okay, well, I hope if you're all using this park, you all to raise your hand because we've had an officer in here in some way or fashion since this incident occurred. Immediately, we decided we're gonna put resources in this park, we're gonna pull from other areas, we're gonna put pay jobs in here. Now that's been here, they haven't gone to any other park and they're still here. So I had hoped if you use the park, you've seen them in here, we will continue that until I feel that you feel it's safe in here. Again, some of it's the world we live in, okay? Do we feel safe anywhere? Are there mass shootings everywhere? Are we safe anywhere? You know, that's something that we have to live with. But again, I'm here to hear your concerns. I'm curious if you have specific things that I can address or things that you think I know of that would help. So with that, I'll open up to any questions? Yes, sir. It doesn't have time on there, so I couldn't really tell that. Usually, I mean, you know, I worked this area for a long time on patrol and I know things are a little bit different now. But I would routinely pull into a park and see if I could find any in park, right? If there was nothing to do, unfortunately nowadays, there's always something to do. But so people know, if you go in a park and it's closed, more than likely, somebody's gonna roll up on you at some point. And if you're doing something you shouldn't be doing, you probably don't want to get caught there. So you want to go somewhere that's more populated, you know, like a mall or something that's open. So I don't have that specific number, but I don't think it's a lot. I can tell you that other than the shooting, the other incidents happened when park was open during the day. And again, I think there, again, we want to make them altogether because it's all Glasgow Park, but they're kind of random, like they don't have any, they're not, there's no similarities between them. They're just arbitrary things that unfortunately happen here. Yes, ma'am. Okay, sure. She wants to know, what is the normal response time after a complaint? And it really depends on what the complaint is, okay? So when somebody calls 911 Center, it's done by call taker. And there's strict protocol. And I hear a lot of people say, "Why do they talk to me like that?" Well, they have a strict protocol that's been validated, that's supposed to be the best. It's, you know, it's certified. So they use this protocol. That protocol puts it into a category, a priority. Priority one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And it goes into that. So depending on where it is, right? Whether, if it's something that just occurred, it might go to one category. If it's in progress, it goes into another. So depending on where that complaint is, if you call to say that your car was broken in the day before, it's gonna bump way down there. And the way we are now with technology is everything's computerized. So there's computers in the cars, there's dispatchers to dispatch. So they take the next priority call. So obviously, we're gonna handle priority ones, twos, and threes before threes, fours, and fives. So it really just depends on what the case was. If you want to know specifically about this case, because I know that was an issue, I can tell you that when this case was called in, it was called in as an assault. It was called in that the perpetrators have fled. And there was dialogue there about needing medical attention and it was denied. So when I look at it on paper, it comes through as assault. The suspects are gone, there's refused medical attention, but the person wants a report. It did, it was a category three, but because there was injury, went to a category two. So again, it goes next up in the bin. So if there's no officers available, the dispatcher, well, the next officer that becomes available, will dispatch them. I've talked to our Assistant Chief Donnie Holden from Communications and we talked about, you know, you can, just because there's nobody available, if it's a case like that, that looks like it deserves more attention, that you could put something out called a BOLO. A BOLO stands for Be On The Lookout. So if they did a BOLO, because I know that there was some talk about, "Well, DSP Troop 2 is right across the street, why were they not here?" Well, because it wasn't BOLOed, it was in our stack of complaints to go out. So it went to the next available officer. Once somebody called back, said, "Look, nobody's here, this guy's bleeding." It went up to priority, they put it out, they had somebody available. I think they dispatched it within two minutes, somebody was here within nine minutes. So again, it really just depends on where it falls. If, and I know jurisdiction is something hard for people to grasp when you have officers of different agencies in different areas. But again, when we had the incident at the mall, it goes out to every agency. There's a shooting at the mall, there's multiple people down. Everybody's going to that incident. So, you know, is there room for improvement there? Yes. A lot of that is communication and, you know, and again, like some of it is just, you know, do you wish things happened different sometimes? Yes, absolutely. But there is an order. It's not like somebody's in the, in recon, just looking at saying, "Hey, I want to dispatch this or this." It's all computerized, which, you know, it's a blessing at times, but sometimes it's a crutch. Sure.
I guess one of my concerns is because it took so long and nobody came out. I just remember an incident where they called it wilding. Because there's no reason to actually beat up and assault this guy because he has nothing.
Absolutely.
He has nothing.
Absolutely.
Now, this happened in New York in such a car, they beat up a ton of people. They were just, they started with one guy, but then they kept going and assaulting throughout the park.
Right.
What's a little concerning is we had one assault, but then it was like you're waiting for more assaults to happen to get, because nobody took it too seriously to, you know, they didn't think, oh.
Yeah.
I, myself, I think, "I don't like this because there could be a wilding incident where you just have people acting nuts running through the park."
I think though, there, you're putting emotion into it, right? How you would feel. But the call taker's different from the dispatcher. So the call taker takes the call, puts it in the category, and it goes over to the dispatcher. The dispatcher gets up.
But I understand that. So then basically, you are saying that you're just waiting for the next assault to happen.
Or if the person called back and said, "Look, they're still here, I see them in the car," or something would have sparked it if there was another call for it. There's a lot of things that could have made it go up or would have directed the attention.
Because it was just, because there's no reason to assault a runner. Because they don't have money on them, they don't have any. It's just somebody that wants to.
Absolutely. This kind of assault, we don't see, we see very, very seldom. Most of the time assaults are, it's a domestic related or it's something else going on. So absolutely, 100% agree with you. This is, and it's not something we often get. But again, when you read the complaint, you can't read all that into it without somebody looking at it and understanding it. So I get your point. I'm sorry.
So if you look at the trends year on year, is there a trend either up or down for crimes or spikes? Like what are you seeing?
A trend for like just parks or overall?
Just like Glasgow itself?
I don't have Glasgow. I did present at the meeting, my numbers are over there. But I can tell you, in almost every category, crime is down. The only thing that is not down right now, and this is from last year, and if you go back two years, it's down even more. The only thing that is not down is thefts of motor vehicles. Thefts from motor vehicles is up, it's up everywhere. I take flak for saying this at times, but I tell people, they're not breaking windows, they're getting cars usually. They're going in to unlock cars with keys in cars. Occasionally, we do get that. For a while there, we were getting broken windows. Here, it's kind of part of why we put the cameras in here because we were getting hit with that. But very seldom, I think there was two thefts from here this year that were reported. Now, mind you, sometimes people don't report stuff like that. Hand up in the back with the white hat.
So I guess you're kind of taking emotion out of this and focusing on the facts. What you're saying is the priority seems over an hour plus.
It really depends on how busy it is, where we are in the day, how many complaints are out there. But I'm not gonna say it's typical, no. I mean, you could call right now for a dog at large and somebody could be here in two minutes. It really just depends on what we're out on at the present time. Yes, sir.
How are you gonna be informing us of the incident?
We'll put everything out in the news. I'm sorry, I'll repeat the question. How are we gonna be informing you of the incident? Any of these incidents will go out in the public media, in the news, in our social media. You'll know about it. Yes, ma'am.
I have a statement. I think this is a beautiful park and I know the world we live in is that great right now. But I'm more for police presence, cameras and all that stuff. Personally, I don't feel safe coming here after all these incidents and I don't like that.
Right.
You can't be afraid to live your life, you know? I enjoy like the view of the park like this that I was had.
Right. Did everybody hear her? She just said that she comes to this park all the time and because of these incidents, it doesn't make her feel safe. And I understand that. And again, I wanted to talk to you about stats because there's the numbers, but I can't help how you feel. So that's why I want to know. The fact that you're all here concerns me because obviously you're here just because you want to know or you're here because you're feeling safe. So we hear you, that's why we've made steps to change. So, we hear you, that's why we've made steps to change, and that's why we'll continue to do that. So, thank you for your comment. Yes, ma'am.
Just a quick question, how can we find out about the incident? Like, I didn't hear anything about an incident last Wednesday.
How can you find out about the incident?
An incident that's going on around in the park or in the area.
Okay.
This is the first time I'm hearing about something happened on Wednesday, and I live coming here, sometimes by myself, more than half.
So, this particular incident was, it was on channel, I think, six, ten news, it was out on Delaware, I think almost every major news media in this area. Get onto our Facebook, or whatever social media you use, if you go on the county, county police and join it, you're gonna get those constantly, trust me. Anytime that something significant happens, you will get that, so.
Is Newcastle County Police the same?
Newcastle County Police, and you'll get Facebook, Twitter. What's that?
This meeting is.
Yeah. It was on.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, this meeting was, so how'd you find out about this meeting? So, perfect. So, just ask her what's going on.
No, but it's, that's what she's saying is true. I, I canceled my subscription to the Delaware newspaper, because all they ever recorded were sports, I mean, from junior high all the way on to professional, I, I would see a lot of police to your area, and there was nothing, they just didn't.
Do you, do you subscribe to our Facebook, Instagram?
I didn't know that.
Whatever other social media, how about here? Here, here's our P, one of our PIOs.
Hey, you'll do it. So, we do have our own news website, you can subscribe for information and tips on there, it's nccpdnews.com. We're also, nccpdnews.com. You can actually, oh, there we go, we got a microphone, right? It's nccpdnews.com, you can sign up on there for information, subscriptions. We also are on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You'll find more of the breaking news and stuff you want to hear on Facebook and Twitter, so we're constantly updating on there, and then our website as well. That's all free, you just have to have an account of some sort, a computer or phone. But, if you guys follow that, if you go, if you were to go on Facebook right now, you would see all the stuff we put out today. So, that's, that's the quickest, you know, way to get information.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you, appreciate it. Way in the back, that's you.
I have a couple of questions. I've been using the park for about fourteen and a half years. So, my first question has to do with homeless people. For the first time a month ago, I saw somebody at the corner of Forty and Eight-Nine-Six Park and Mall. And I hit that corner, and it sounded startling, because the person was lying there.
Right.
Never seen anybody in the park like that. So, I'm curious to know about homeless people and, and incidents like that. Something happened last week, I just know something general about it, and I'm one of those high-early morning people. So, I'm curious to know what time that happened and where in the park, because I feel safe here. My husband doesn't look safe when I'm here, so I had to miss all week, and I haven't been at the camera house. But, I'm willing to reroute myself if you say that it happened over by the barn or in the wooded area, so if you can trust that.
Okay. Did everybody hear her questions?
Yes.
All right. I was gonna say, I forgot the first one already, but I didn't. Somebody asked me a five-part question the other day, and I was like, "Oh, my." So, the first one, homelessness. Homelessness is something, obviously, we deal with all the time. One of the things that we, we're able to utilize now is our Behavioral Health Unit, because it's not against the law to be homeless, and sometimes when we deal with homeless people, they don't want our help. But, what we do is, when we find out there's a homeless camp, if there's homeless people in this park, we would send our Behavioral Health Unit out to try to encourage them to seek treatment for whatever it is they, they need. If it's just them being homeless, we also have the Hope Center, and we would refer people to the Hope Center, where we can give them hope while they're trying to get housing. Some of these people that you'll see on, on the corners, the particular intersection that you're talking about has been there for a very long time. I pass them every single day at Harris Corner. There's four of them on each corner, or there's one on each of the four corners. They're there every day. I mean, there's not, there, we're not doing anything about them being homeless unless we get called. Sometimes we do help our partners with the other police jurisdictions, certainly if they're in our jurisdiction, because we've had them crop up in, you know, our communities where they find a little wooded area in the community and they set up shop. So, but we try to go out there and encourage them to get assistance. A lot of times, the frustrating part about it is, they want to be where they're at. They're doing well at that corner, they're making money at that corner, and they're gonna continue to be there.
Do you talk about specifically where the incidents occurred?
So, that, I'm sorry, that, last question was, so this happened during the afternoon, it was like, I think, 5:30-ish in the afternoon, it was broad daylight, it was between the basketball court and the main entrance over here, that next entrance in there. It wasn't in the woods, it wasn't somebody, it was, you know, coming out of the bushes. Again, you know, I hoped to be able to share more, I, I seriously believe it was a random incident. I don't know with somebody that goes around and does this at other places, I don't know why they chose to come to this park. I don't know if they were here. I can tell you that the victim was a completely innocent victim that walks here on a regular basis, that had noise-canceling headphones on, so they couldn't hear what was going on around them, and, you know, and it happened right there in broad daylight. There was a couple county employees that, that witnessed it. So, like I said, I mean, I, I wouldn't, and I wouldn't feel comfortable telling you to walk in any specific place, because anything can happen to you at any place. Is that, was that it, or do we have another one?
No.
Okay. Yes, sir.
First, I, first, the park, is this supposed to close at a certain time at dusk?
The park should be closed at dusk.
Why don't they have signs? What's all this?
What's that, their signs? Yeah, their signs, yes.
Do they have cameras?
I think they're all over, but yes.
Okay, I've never seen.
Yeah, no, there are signs, and again, that's something that if we had a gate system, we could get people out, but unfortunately, what happens with the gate system, if the gate closes and there's people back here, we're, we don't know they're back here, nor can we get in here, but we'll find a way.
The other thing is, I've been walking, I'm walking the park a lot, I'm, I try to hide when I see my guys in cars flipping out, girls walking around, they're actually stopping the road.
Right.
When they stop in the road with the playground, and it could be innocent or, my, my question is, that's not a 911 call, who can, what number do you call to get somebody to come in?
All right. So, his question is, he sees creepy people that are checking out people at the playground or walking through the park, and he feels that they're doing something devious, what number does he call? You can always call 911, but there is a non-emergency number, which is 573-2800. And, and that was, and as, as far as talking about statistics, I think we had three suspicious vehicles in the park. I don't know the specifics on each one, but that's how that would come in, yes, absolutely. Anyone else?
First of all, thank you for the show.
Sure, absolutely.
I don't think gates would be a big.
Right.
Yeah, nothing. We just, it's not a stop if we're walking in, but at least it keeps people from driving and things that shouldn't do.
But, remember, that's at night when nobody's supposed to be here, so when you're here during the day, the gates aren't really helping.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just.
But, we have other things in place, right.
And I just see other behaviors that go on that aren't necessarily called safety, but that if those were just, or it's like, I feel like people think now they can just get away with anything here, and that's, that's the feeling that I get, just being out there, like, people just do anything, they park wherever they want to park, they, and then you guys put your gates up to stop them, and they still park, and it's part of the, I just feel like, people feel like, oh, like, we can just do whatever we want here and get away.
Right. So, I'll just share her comments, that she's felt like that because this stuff is out there, that it makes people feel like they can come here and get away with anything because it's out there. And that's why I'm confident that we're gonna come up with a resolution to these cases, and we're gonna be able to announce it, because one thing I am very proud of, and that is our Criminal Investigation Unit, our Patrol Units, and our clearance rates for our department. They far exceed many other departments across this state and this nation, so I can tell you that we will do everything we can to put a resolution to this case, and, and maybe they will think twice about doing something here. Did you have another question or a comment?
I just had, I just had a quick comment.
Okay.
So, I don't think all the signs in the world are gonna help keep people out, you know. I live right near a white car.
Okay.
I live up here, I live by a white car, and I'll tell you what, in no time, you know, there's no good one or a good one at the park. So, I think the gates are a really good idea, you know, to try to turn people out for hours, but, you know, I think that's, that's my opinion, and I don't believe in that. There's always people trying to get around.
Right. Absolutely, yep. Well, that's it, I thank you all.
Councilman Tackett.
I thank you all for coming out, and I can introduce somebody that, that I spent a lot of time talking to, and I can tell you that is very focused on your issues and your concerns, because I talk to them pretty regularly, so if I can call up Councilman Dave Tackett of this district. You want to come by the cell? Okay, all right. Instead of that, we'll introduce the President of our County Council.
Karen Harley-Nagle.
Karen Harley-Nagle, thank you. I talked to her every, I talked to her this morning.
We do, we do. But, it's, it's the double last name that gets them. I want to thank everybody so much for coming out. This is really, really important to us as co-chair of Public Safety. This is the number one issue for me in the county, that everybody not only is safe, they feel safe, that when you come out here, you can enjoy yourself without worrying. We're gonna do everything we can possible to make sure that we have the number of police officers we need, that we are hiring more, that we are doing everything we can to hire, because with an authorized strength of 415, we're down to, what, about 53 officers now?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, we've, okay, we've hired in a couple more. So, this is really important, and we're doing everything we can, and I want to share, ask you, that if you know anybody that wants to become a police officer, send them to us, you know, we need to be hiring people, but we need your help in also making sure we can get up to our authorized strength. And if you have any concerns or anything, you call myself, the other council members, we will be glad to help you, give you any information you need, any assistance, and we are taking this extremely seriously. Thank you.
All right, good evening. First and foremost, I, I don't want anybody to leave here this evening thinking that our uniform patrol are not doing each and everything they can every single day to protect us. I think we all realize the fact that as we run away from a situation, they run to the situation, and that's what they do, and that's what they're sworn to do, and they're dedicated, and they're here to do that for us. And, I also want to give a little shout out to our park personnel who got everything set up here this evening, and as it was mentioned by the chief a few minutes ago, there's actually a park personnel who was here that evening, who assisted the situation and what happened there, and was able to assist that individual as, you know, they were waiting for the dispatch. I know a lot of great questions have come up tonight, a lot that I hear, a lot, you know, some of you have said, please, take a minute and sign up on the list in the back of the room if you have an opportunity. We use that information to disseminate electronically a lot of meetings like this that are important, that we find, or we hope that you would find interesting. The police have shared with you another, a couple other venues. Councilman Tool, I know, also maintains a Facebook page and all, somebody that was extremely helpful and influential, and, and did an amazing job for me, is my aide Valerie George, who has now become a councilwoman over in the city, more towards Newark and the outskirts of the city. So, Councilwoman Valerie George, you know, I commend her for taking that movement, knowing that, what we needed. I, I, I really just want to premise, a lot of the comments that we've heard here tonight, you know, that, you know, we've heard a lot about the calls for service. Well, we have a Friends of the Glasgow Park Facebook page. If you're not part of that, I encourage you to sign up for that, too. I mean, we, we've tried to exercise so many venues to get the information out, to be certain that you were able to hear about these type of events or, or situations that are happening. We, we post them on there as soon as we get them from the police. Times are changing, people are struggling out there, and a lot of that's migrating into what we're seeing in these parks, unfortunately. We know these type of situations come in waves. We need to learn from those waves, and we need to be ready for the next wave. We shouldn't let it take us by surprise. You know, with this area through here, I share this with Representative Eric Morrison, who's back there. Him and I speak regularly about situations that happen in the park. He's reached out, you know, asking what's going on in the safety and the things that are happening, and what they can do, too. Senator Brian Townsend is in the back, he also has shared his concerns also about different situations and things that are happening, as a senator, and both of them representing each house in Dover, you know, are extremely useful for us as we try to move forward with any initiatives that we're gonna look to do. I, I want to assure everybody here this evening that we need to change the way we've been thinking. The calls for service that we heard, I know they were relatively low, but those calls for service are not a direct pulse on what's happening in this park, and you all have heard it, you've said it right here. I mean, obviously, you could have called for anything, but how many people out here today has actually called 911 or the non-emergency when you've been in the park? See? What do I see? I'm, I'm seeing two hands, three hands, or so, you know, but probably everybody here who has seen a situation in the park. But, generally, we continue to move on, and, and, you know, you don't call that in, and that's what the Colonel's looking at, he's looking at those calls. So, definitely, those calls are not a pulse. We have to change the way we're, we've been thinking. I am ready to work with our County Council President, Karen Harley-Nagle, my fellow council members, Tool and George, and we can introduce some legislation, asking for a timeline, a specifics, a budget, as to what needs to be done. Colonel, I believe, mentioned a little while ago about how many parks that we have in Newcastle County. Obviously, we're not gonna be able to move in a wave on all of them, but at least we can get it done. We, we approve a budget each year, and we can break it down. We've got Kendall over here, she oversees all of our parks. She hears a lot of this, she goes to a lot of the meetings, she sees what happened, happens, what the concerns are, and what people want to see, and that's what we want to hear out of here. I like the gate idea, the situation that's happened, a couple of them have been at night. I don't think they would have been able to get in here. The Colonel did mention that some of the stuff has happened during the day, and the gate would not have stopped that, and that's true, and we realize it. So, we're just gonna have to try to figure out how it's done, and we're gonna have to change our thinking as we move into the future on how we're gonna protect you better as citizens, and we want you to, we want to restore your confidence in coming back to our parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Morrison.
Hi, everyone, and thank you for being here tonight. I am State Representative Eric Morrison, I represent the 27th District, which includes this park. And, in a lot, I live right down the road, probably a half a mile, and I'm here frequently, and I look, in a lot of ways, I look at this park as kind of the crown jewel of the 27th District. This is an amazing park, and we're so fortunate to have it, have it here. So, for those of you who live in the district, you're home, for those of you who do not live in the district but frequent the park, welcome, and thank you for coming to the park. A couple of things I wanted to say is, first of all, you know, we just finished up our legislative session, and as Senator Townsend can attest, it gets extremely crazy in the last couple of weeks of June, but I had actually sent out an email the last week of June to a lot of related entities, saying, "Let's get together, we need to talk about this," so we were working on arranging schedules. And then, when the incident happened last week, I actually texted Matt, I think it was Sunday morning, not even letting him enjoy his coffee, and we were texting back and forth, and he said, "We've been working on this for three days, we're working on setting up a public town hall," we were back and forth, so I want to thank him and his office for his responsiveness, they're always very responsive and helpful. The other thing I want to say is, and I'm stealing Councilman Tackett's thunder here, because he always says this, so I get to say it tonight, we all work as a team. So, you can reach out to any of us, whether it's about the park or another issue, whatever it is, any concern, you can reach out to me, to Matt, to Karen, to Dave, to Brandon, to Valerie, to Brian, reach out to any of us, and if we are not the right resource to get you what you need, we will get you to the right resource. We do work as a team. The final thing I'll say is, I've heard some dialogue here tonight about not being informed, or how do we keep informed? And as Councilman Tackett said, you know, we all have email newsletters we send out, I know that I sent out an email blast to constituents that I have on my email list about tonight. So we have that.